Good evening and welcome to City of Pasco's Council Meeting. The Council thanks you for being part of our city government. At meetings, the Council, the City Council takes formal action on items, holds public hearings, and conducts other business of the city. Agenda packets are available on the City of Pasco's website at www.pasco-g.gov/agenda. This meeting is being televised live on PSC TV Channel 191 on Spectrum Cable in Pasco and Richland, and is streamed on the city's Facebook page, website, YouTube channel, and go-to webinar. This and previous council meeting video is available on the city's website. Lastly, the public may submit their comments and/or questions by contacting the city manager, city clerk, and/or by using the Ask Pasco app. And with that, uh, can we get a roll call?
Councilmember Campos?
Present.
Milne?
Present.
Roach?
Present.
Serrano?
Here.
Torres?
Present.
Mayor Protem Maloney?
Present.
And Mayor Barajas?
Present.
All seven accounted for.
Thank you. And could you please rise for the pleasure of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And with that, we move on to item four on the agenda, Consent Agenda. All items listed under the Consent Agenda are considered to be routine by City Council and will be enacted by a roll call vote as one motion in the form listed. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If further discussion is desired by council members or the public, the item may be removed from the Consent Agenda to the regular agenda and considered separately. We have item A, Approval of Meeting Minutes. To approve the minutes of Pasco City Council's regular meeting and regular workshop held on March 7th and March 14, 2022. Item B, Ordinance Amending Pasco Municipal Code Title III Related to Miscellaneous Late Fees to adopt Ordinance Number 4583. Amending Pasco Municipal Code Chapter 3.70, The Miscellaneous Billing Management, and Section 3.35.100. Miscellaneous related to late fees and further authorized publication by summary only. Item C, Resolution Bid Award Riverview East Sewer Lift Station. To approve Resolution Number 4163, amending bid number 19053 for the Riverview East Sewer Lift Station, AKA Road 52 and Pearl Street Lift Station project to Big D's construction of Tracy's Incorporated of Pasco, Washington, and further authorize the city manager to execute the contract documents allowing all necessary budget adjustments. Item D, Resolution Emergency Agreement for Animal Control Services. To approve Resolution Number 4164, approving the emergency services agreement with Benton Franklin Humane Society for Animal Control and Sheltering Services, and further authorize the city manager to execute the agreement. Item E, Tourism Promotion Area Reserve Fund Request. To approve the 2022 Special Project Expenditures for the Tourism Promotion Area in the amount of $428,800 to be funded from the TPA Reserve Balance. Can I get a motion?
I move to approve the Consent Agenda as read.
There's motion, can I get a second?
This Councilman Milne, a second.
Moved by Mayor Protem Maloney and seconded by Councilman Milne. And? Can I get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Serrano?
Yes.
Campos?
Yes.
Torres?
Yes.
Milne?
Yes.
Roach?
Yes.
Maloney?
Yes.
And Barajas?
Yes.
Great, seven fully unanimous.
And that passes unanimously? Thank you. And we move on to item five, Proclamations and Acknowledgements. None listed, so we move on to item number six. Visitors Other Than Agenda Items. This item is provided to allow citizens the opportunity to bring items to the attention of the City Council or to express an opinion on an issue. Its purpose is not to provide a venue for debate or for the posing of questions with the expectation of an immediate response. Some questions require consideration by Council. Over the time, over time, and after a deliberative process with input from a number of different sources, some questions are best directed to the staff members who have access to specific information. Citizen comments will normally be limited to three minutes each by the mayor. Those with lengthy messages are invited to summarize their comments and/or submit written information for consideration by Council outside of formal meetings. Do we have any, uh, visitors tonight that wish to make a comment? Go ahead, sir. If you'd like to step to the podium, state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name's Justin Carey, um, 92nd and Poole. I'm a lifelong Pasco resident. I've been here before. Glad that everyone's not running away this time. Last time I came, was out, so. Um, I'm grateful to Jesus for the right to speak here, petition the government for grievances. Obviously, we're done after the last two years. The city has spent placing health of the community above everything, sometimes even free speech and assembly and due process. And I'm, I'm asking with that willingness to protect the citizens, which I assume everyone's heart was about protecting the citizens' health. I think it's unexplainable as to why Planned Parenthood is still operating on Court Street. For 13 years now, they've had a special permit to operate there, and according to the state data, 1,300 Franklin County babies' lives have ended. And, and they stopped counting, they, for some reason, they stopped taking or publishing that data in 2016, so it's probably closer to 2,000 Franklin County babies have lost their lives. That's enough to fill three elementary schools. Um, and I know, and I, because I hear them when people talk to me outside of there, that the excuses are usually the same, they do a lot of good things at Planned Parenthood. Um, but I, I always ask this question, people say that to me. Um, if they were a, a store in Pasco that great service, friendly people, um, great prices, but they were trafficking kids out of the back room, it's just, just a small part of their business, would you shop there? And everyone obviously has to say no. But that's generally the reason as to why Planned Parenthood exists. Well, they do lots of good things, but what people don't realize obviously is that their goal is, is abortions, that's how they make most of their money, other than the stuff they get from the government. So we have that business, it's a threat to every, every baby in this town. Um, and it's, uh, for sure ended more lives Planned Parenthood has, or abortion has, way more than COVID has over the last two years. Um, and you might also say, and that was sort of the reason why this was, it appeared with, with, um, at the time is why they were allowed to operate, is because they don't do surgical abortions, um, in Pasco. Um, obviously, they do, you know, any pill that ends life, it's poison, uh, it's killing a baby, whether it's, um, the pills or Plan B or whatever. Uh, but with the recent article in the Tracy Herald saying that they're anticipating more traffic in the Kenwick location, I think it'd be naive to think that they're not going to want to be doing those surgical abortions in Pasco.
Sir, I'm going to ask you to wrap up, please.
Yep, about 200 yards from an elementary school, so. Counsel, I'm asking you to get ahead of this now, revoke this special license, place a moratorium on all abortion-based businesses in this city, just like you have with pot shops, porn peddlers?
Sir?
And strip clubs. So, um, yeah, don't be worried about a lawsuit and, and do the right thing in this situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from any of our visitors tonight? Seeing none, we move on to item number seven. Reports from Committees and/or Officers. Do we have any reports from any of our council members? Mayor Protem Maloney?
And thank you, Mayor Barajas. Um, yes, I had a very busy week in the community. Um, on Wednesday, I was asked to moderate a panel discussion with Senator Murray for three different communities in eastern Washington that received direct funding allocations for the federal budget. As a reminder, Pasco received $3 million in funding for the MLK Center, and then also I think there was, uh, Lake Shalann, uh, received some money for a community center there, and City of Yakima, I believe, also received money for, for one of their projects. So, um, it, it was, it was great to hear these other great community projects, and it's always good when we, we get a piece of the, uh, of the, of our taxes back in terms of allocation, so. Glad to see that. Participated in the ribbon cutting for Edison Valerio's, uh, insurance company over there on, um, off of Court Street. It was, uh, he's been a longstanding volunteer and community, um, advocate, and so it was good to see, to be able to help participate in that. I think, uh, any or all of us could talk about, um, Friday evening, so I'll, I'll, I'll save my comments and allow, allow others to speak that, other than say that, you know, thank, thank staff for, for all their hard work. Um, and then on Saturday, I, I joined, um, Mayor Barajas in the groundbreaking for the Franklin County Historical Museum's, um, expansion, and so that's going to be a wonderful community project when they get that all done. So I think that was it. It was a busy week. Um, it's good to see things being back to normal a bit, um, after, you know, such a long hiatus with, uh, under the COVID restrictions, so.
Thank you. Great report. Any other council members wishing to share a little bit? Councilman Milne?
Uh, thank you, thank you, Mayor. Um, I did have a couple meetings, but the one that stuck out the most was I did meet with, uh, about 20 downtown business owners, and we talked about different ways with, uh, Mike Gonzalez, um, basically running the meeting, and then we also had Officer Alex Michelle there as well, but it was a really good, uh, meeting, really good discussions on ways that we could try to combat the homelessness and what the business owners wanted, and they're talking about putting together more of a group. And, uh, it was really good to see again, a lot of business owner, I'd never seen so many business owners in one room, uh, at the same time, but it was a, a two-hour discussion, and a lot of good things came up, and we're trying to come up with ways, and, um, they're going to reach out with us if they came up with some other ideas before our council retreat, but, uh, definitely was glad to represent the city on the council level, and, uh, again, it was a, I thought it was a very informative and also, uh, rewarding meeting, so that was, uh, that's what took up most of my day, uh, this past week.
Thank you for that. Any other council members?
We had a wonderful opportunity to, uh, celebrate the city's continued excellence. It's always great walking around that room and seeing the people who actually do the work that we try to advance from this podium. So for the staff, you know, for those who I had the chance to meet, uh, thank you. Again, it was great meeting you, meeting spouses, meeting, uh, other family members. And for those who I didn't get to meet, I'm sorry about that. Uh, it was a short night, I mean, it was a few hours, but it's always hard to meet everyone, but, so thank you for, for your continued work to make the City of Pasco as excellent as it is. And, uh, city manager, and, and specifically to those who put the time into this, um, I don't think I got to thank each one of them, but thank you to them. It was a heck of an event, so thank you.
Any other comments from our council members? Okay, thank you. Um, so, Councilwoman Torres, would you like to say any comments?
Yes, and thank, and thank you for allowing me a moment to speak. Um, I did attend the DPDA meeting last week, and, uh, they are continuing on with, um, planning for Cinco de Mayo. Excuse me, I was trying to get, I was trying not to confuse it with April 1st. I know that Food Truck Friday is also coming up, so they did mention that, that is going to start April 1st, and I believe it's going to be an evening event from 5 to 9, I think is what they had said, but Cinco de Mayo is also, um, the planning is still underway, so keep an eye out for that, for more information, and they are posting daily, I believe, on the Downtown Pasco Facebook page, so people can find out more information there as well. Thank you, and I also enjoyed Friday evening's festivities. We got to celebrate many of our amazing staff of the City of Pasco and got to meet many people in person, which was really nice after not having seen people face-to-face for about two years now. So it was really nice to see a lot of new faces and, um, just get to cheer everybody on, so thank you.
Thank you for that, Councilwoman Torres. Oops, lost my voice there. Thank you for that, Councilwoman Torres. Uh, I do have a, just a few comments regarding some of the, um, festivities that I attended, uh, the groundbreaking, um, and I may have attended some other stuff, but we're everywhere, so we forget, but what stood out was the groundbreaking of the Franklin County Historic Society. If you've not been out there, I invite you all to come and visit the museum. It's, it's, it changes, um, and Damian Davis that's running the museum has so many fun facts, uh, and it makes, he makes it very interesting, so I invite you to attend. The other, um, thing that I wanted to mention too, um, I, I, regarding our, our awards for our employees at the employee banquet on Friday, it was, it was great to see everyone in person, it was great to see council members out there, our new council members that were able to attend. Um, but I do want to, again, for those individuals that did not attend the evening celebration, um, I want to say thank you, um, to every single one of you, city employees, city staff, um, especially the individuals that worked for so many years, 35-plus years chief, um, and the individuals that are retired now, um, 40-plus years for, um, Mr. Rabel, um, and other staff that recently retired. Thank you so much for your dedication, your passion and commitment to the City of Pasco. The Employees of the Year, um, Ms. Whitworth, uh, again, just saying thank you to every one of you for your continued dedication and service to Pasco. You know, saying thank you sounds so little and maybe meaning, uh, meaning less, but it's, it's, comes from the heart. As council members, we are very grateful to all of you, um, and this city would not run without you. So again, thanks. Okay, so moving on to item number eight on our agenda, Hearings and Council Action on Ordinances and Resolutions Relating There Too. Um, item A, The Appeal of Garcia Lakecomer of Water Main Installation. Director White.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. Uh, this issue involves a lakecomer utility lakecomer agreement at Dradian Road 48, and Council, to my knowledge, has not ever considered an appeal of a lakecomer agreement. Um, so, uh, with that, our city attorney will, uh, provide the, uh, present, the summary on the presentation this evening.
Sure, yeah, great, thank you. So, um, this goes perfect with our theme of trying things that have never been done within the first quarter of the year that we've already done. So, uh, this is, uh, a different one, uh, we haven't been down this road before, certainly not since we passed, uh, the code that we currently have under PMC 1425. Uh, we should start, uh, with the fact, we'll go through the quasi-judicial script just to make sure that we're all, uh, clear that, uh, that what's going on, and then I'll kind of explain kind of the background and the process and kind of what the next steps need to be. So with that being said, uh, this is a quasi-judicial hearing, uh, to render a final decision on materials presented. Uh, it's defined as a proceeding in which the council defines legal rights, duties, or privileges of specific parties in a hearing or other contested proceeding. The Appearance of Fairness Doctrine applies, and the hearing must be fair in three respects: form, substance, and appearance. All council members should consider whether they have potential conflicts as follows: A, a demonstrated bias for or against any of the parties; B, any direct or indirect financial interest in the outcome of the proceeding which would affect the council members personally; C, whether there has been any prejudgment of the issues prior to the hearing, the facts; D, whether there has been any ex parte contact with anyone other than staff prior to this hearing; and finally, E, any other conflict which a council member believes would prevent them from hearing this matter fairly and impartially. If any council member has any of these concerns or disclosures, now would be the time to make them known. Hearing none. Uh, are there any members of the public seeking to disqualify a member of council from participating in these proceedings? Hearing none. Okay, so we can move forward with the hearing. Uh, so just as a little, uh, background, uh, as I stated before, PMC 1425 outlines , uh, the process that we go through, uh, to, um, to enter lakecomer agreements with folks, and a lot of folks don't really understand what lakecomer agreements are. Essentially, uh, in the, the, kind of the easiest way to think about it is they are agreements, uh, when people develop their property, uh, folks that come after that would subsequently be able to, um, be able to obtain a, um, I guess, uh, they wouldn't have to contribute, uh, the, the person who came before them would have to do all the contribution, and they would get a free ride, for lack of a better word. Uh, so what this process does is allows folks who develop to make sure that they don't, uh, subsequently have to take that burden on themselves, and everybody else come along after the fact and then be able to, uh, get that, uh, that benefit. So, uh, prior to 2013, these were, uh, these were, uh, I guess, they weren't mandatory. Now they are mandatory, and we have to enter these if people apply. So at this point, what we need to do is go through this process, and this is really for folks to be able to, uh, come forward and decide whether they want to, um, uh, go forward and contest their inclusion into that. One of the things that we do is we have the city engineer, uh, do a preliminary assessment, uh, reimbursement area, and so his job is to come up with what he believes is the proper layout for how this process should go. With that being said, uh, he puts together that preliminary assessment reimbursement area, we let folks in the neighborhood who are going to be found by that, uh, let them know that this is going to affect their property, and then they have a right to come into council and contest that. Uh, at the end of the day, council is the one who makes the final decision, uh, makes the final determination about what the assessment reimbursement area should be. So with that, I can turn it over to the city engineer, he can kind of explain how he came to the conclusion that this was the preliminary assessment reimbursement area for this particular application.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council. It's been a while. So, uh, first and foremost, if you've tried to read through my agenda, uh, that I created there, you might get back down to the decision and say, what the heck is he talking about? And if you are saying that and thinking that now that I pointed that out to you, that's called interruptions, about four or five of them, trying to get that one written, so I do apologize for that. So, uh, again, uh, the basis of this, as Eric had pointed out, is to be reimbursed, so someone that comes in, develops a piece of property, if they do so and make improvements that benefit others, I think that's really the key of looking at this, is, is what benefit does it provide? If it does benefit others, such as, in this case, extending a water main past other properties in order to be able to get to their property, then that benefit is, is considered, and, uh, then it's, uh, done on a front-footage basis, which is what this assessment was based upon. So each one of these parcels that, that are highlighted there in some of the exhibits or handouts that I included in your packet there, each one of these parcels on both sides of this water main have benefited from that, have potential benefit from that water main being extended. I think the, the more important thing there is if these parcels don't develop within a certain amount of time and/or need this improvement, they do not have to pay for this improvement. So there is a time limit on these lakecomers, and council can kind of go into that a little bit more detail, but whether it's street improvements or utility improvements, there's often different timelines or different expiring dates placed upon those. In many cases, that happens to be 15 years, is what the time limit is. So in this case, again, a water main was extended, it was extended as shown on your drawing with the, the bold line there, and the parcels identified there are the ones that benefit from that. And probably the best way to look at that is each side of that pipe, if you will, has benefit or, or receives benefit from the installation of that pipe. Um, if they had, for example, worked all together to do this, they would not be included in this assessment area. They would have been originally, or taken out of that and would have participated privately with those folks, and in this case, that was not, did not happen. So, um, again, just a couple of facts to point out of how it, it's, it's actually the frontage or the distance across the front of the property that that extension or that utility or that improvement or benefit, uh, provides to those, uh, additional properties, so.
So, uh, as the city engineer pointed out, uh, this was the assessment reimbursement or the preliminary assessment reimbursement area that, uh, uh, he came up with because based on the frontage foot, who would benefit from that, uh, being able to tap into that facility. So, uh, and he, uh, in our code, um, the section that he uses to, uh, come, to come up with that, it is, uh, it is long and tedious, but I'll, I'll be very brief as I can. Um, but essentially, the analysis that, uh, the city engineer would have to engage in is related to 1425040 for preliminary determinations, and, uh, one, says it's the likelihood that the benefited property would be developed within the 15 or 20 years, depending on whether it's a street or utility. This is a utility, so it would be 20 years. Two, the likelihood that at a time, uh, that, that at the time of development of the benefited property, such property would be required, uh, to install similar, uh, street and/or utility improvements. Three doesn't apply, because it only applies to street improvements. Uh, four, uh, for utility system improvements, uh, the likelihood that A, that such improvements would be tapped into or used, including not only direct connections, but also connections to laterals or branches connecting thereto by properties within the assessment reimbursement area, or B, uh, that such properties will receive a special benefit from utility system improvements, such as, but not limited to pump stations, sewer lift stations, additional utility pipe depth, uh, to accommodate future utility expansion, and five, an equitable allocation, this gets to the, the point that the city engineer was making, which is an equa, uh, number five is an equitable allocation of the cost of construction among the properties within the assessment reimbursement area, so that each pays for benefits attributable to those improvements. The method or methods used to calculate the allocation of the assessment may either be frontage foot, or excuse me, front footage, number of units, square footage, or may be the zone and termini method, or other recognized mess, methods reasonably calculated to equitably allocate the assessment. So, uh, it's not an exact science, it's, uh, it's basically, uh, this is the city engineer's calculation based on, uh, his expertise, uh, based on who he believes would be required to connect to the facility and who would be benefited by this facility. So with that, that's, um, how the city came to the conclusions of, um, of the amount, uh, the preliminary assessment reimbursement area, and then, uh, folks now have decided that they, um, they either want, uh, don't want to be included in it, uh, in the area, or they want to contest, uh, their percentage, uh, of the, uh, particular total of the facility area. So with that, um, I guess if there's anybody that would like to come up and testify?
And Mrs. Cantu here, I'm not sure if they have the same position as we do. Um, I spoke to Mr. Ferguson.
Yes, if I, if I could, um, and Mrs. Roscoe, I just would say, because you are an attorney as well, are you here in your capacity as, uh, a potential, uh, are you representing Mr. Hollingsworth, are you here for yourself as well?
Yes, I'm representing our family, I'm not sure about the Cantus.
Okay, well, if that's the case, if you could, uh, do you solemnly swear, uh, that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth and the whole truth?
I do.
Great, thank you.
The, the question that I had with Mr. Ferguson, and which I needed clarification, was not, would we have a future benefit? Obviously, if there's a water main and we need to hook up to it, we would have a benefit to use of that. The concern was mainly here, if you can see, this property here is actually subdividing, so they are now, and I think they've already actually applied, in half. So first question is the percentage of what we would be liable for here, because the benefit here is going to go down, which they have more frontage foot, depending on the direction that we calculate, and I think that that's important, specifically knowing that the goal in providing this water main was in order to subdivide the property so that they could sell that second piece. Uh, we know the Kaisers, the long portion here, has already either subdivided or is in the process of doing so, and we have that information, we understand that they have a large portion here that they're going to be attributed based on the amount, um, of frontage foot. However, that first property, the property, the developer here, Garcia, is paying the least amount towards this main, and yet they're receiving the highest benefit, given that that's going to allow them to subdivide and have either sell or, um, build a home there, and they're going to use that water main for both properties, not the only, not the frontage foot, I guess, not the one property. Um, our house, it's Lot 2 there, and the Cantus 3, we don't have the ability to subdivide the way that our lot is laid out, we would never have the benefit of adding an additional space, we're not going to be able to get any additional income from that, it's going to continue to be a single-family resident on an acre. Um, same for the Cantus. The second concern we had, and I don't have any information about this because I don't have The second concern we had, and I don't have any information about this because I don't have knowledge of the installation of water mains and costs and so forth, but parcel looks like five here, so the Kaisers actually use their own company or a company that he's associated with to install the water main. And they had been talking about it, the Garcias and the Kaisers, for quite some time. Come in, asked us, would you like to install this? And I said, what are we doing? You know, what are you proposing here? And at this point, it doesn't make any financial sense for us to pay to have a water main, then pay to hook up to a water main when we have a well that's functioning. Obviously, at some point, we might assume that our well is no longer going to function and we would need to connect. But at this point, I don't see that there was an issue with doing so and we declined to participate in that, knowing the goal was to subdivide. So we would like, one, to look at what would be the typical cost it would be to install a water main from 48 down Drady to where it's at. And then two, why was that section, or second portion that would be split for a parcel not included in that? Why did we go simply across the front and not down where it should be, increasing the Garcia's, whose developers amount, but then decreasing or making the other portions that the remaining individuals would have to pay less based on the fact that we're actually not going to be able to benefit from this like the Garcias or the Kaisers are? And that's all the information I have. I don't know if my husband has anything to provide. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else wishing to testify? Or contest? Okay, hearing none. So at this point, I think, unless the city engineer, would you like to respond to that point real quick?
Sure, I can, I can speak to that. So the way that we determine the benefit is based upon the existing infrastructure that's put in and the existing parcels that are currently laid out the way that you see them there as well. Please note also that there's some fire hydrants involved in this, so there's some fire protection that is benefiting everyone within this area as well. The further subdivision, it depends on how that lot is actually subdivided. They could do so possibly with a flag lot or an easement or some other things to get to the back lot. So there may be no need for a further extension south on that, depending upon how they do that. So it could just be a service then at that point, or a connection that would be similar to the other lots. But again, that front footage is the best method that we have available to us as it faces that utility or that improvement.
So I also want to clarify that oftentimes, I think folks will conflate these with liens. And this is not a lien. This is not something that will run with the property or have to be transacted at the sale of a property. This will run with the land. It's a, it's a notice that is filed and recorded on the property. And it stays on the property for 15 years or 20 years in this case because it's a utility. And if no one ever connects to it or never taps, then the fee never is paid. So that's the, the risk of somebody who puts in a facility such as this, then there's no guarantee they would ever receive a dime. So at this point, this was the, the method that the city engineer came up and with the reasoning. Oftentimes, there'll be questions, from what I understand, I haven't done very many of these, but if ever, but apparently there's time for, if folks have questions, the council has questions. At the end of the day, what we would need is just direction from council in the form of a motion to return with some findings and conclusions so that you could enter some, just like a judgment in a court. You would need to make those findings and conclusions and I can return with those. I just would need some direction tonight to know how to proceed.
We do have questions or comments from Mayor Protemaloni. Go ahead.
Yes, thank, thank you for this. Obviously, this is when we were faced with something unusual, we're all, we're all trying to figure it out a little bit and make sure that we're following our leak obligations primarily. And that's of course paramount in a quasi-dual manner like this, as we act like judges. Mr. Ferguson, so obviously this is abnormal because there's not, no findings have been prepared to date. So when you're talking about a motion that you're, you're looking for, would that be, we come to a conclusion and we're looking for facts to support that? Or are you asking staff to go forward and look at the rule of law more closely and provide a set of findings that better outline the legal territory that we find ourselves in this particular case? What does this look like?
Sure, yeah, all I need is just a motion to proceed and return with findings and conclusions consistent with the city engineer's analysis or if there's some other analysis, hence the, the reason why oftentimes, apparently, these hearings can take two or three times, they get continued because there's oftentimes follow-up questions that council may have for, for staff to be able to return with that data. But really, the only thing that I need right tonight is a motion to prepare the findings. So you're not actually voting on it yet. We would return with findings and as long as those are consistent with how the council feels at that point, then that would be the final decision. But at this point, I just need a motion to proceed with findings and conclusions, either based on how the city engineers prepared this or some other direction.
So if we were to find and, and pass a motion to, for example, go with the city engineer's findings or position, then staff would prepare a set of findings that would come back in front of council at a future meeting. And then we would decide at that point in time whether we were satisfied with those findings.
That's correct.
And then could therefore then rule or then move and, and go down the voting path, either reject those findings and come back and do it again or
You got it.
Or adopt those findings?
Absolutely. Yep, that's absolutely right.
Is it appropriate to ask process questions as to how we, how the city engineer came to this conclusion at this time, or is this, would that be part of the?
Oh, this is it, yep.
Great. Mr. Ford, I have questions.
Sure.
Really, one question. So in our code, it allows us to calculate the benefit by a number of different means. In this case, you chose the frontage feet as the, as the conclusion. And it seems that that is perhaps the, the question really at hand is why that over a different method that might more, that might differently proportion the costs based on maybe a different set of benefits? For example, square footage of the lot might be a different method that could come to a, would come to a different proportionment. And perhaps in the, in the case, in this, in this case of a, of a lot that is extending very, you know, very far away from the water mains, what was that looking? Can you, can you help me understand that?
Sure, yeah. And, and part of that is, is consideration of the front footage being the most accurate, I think, method. Oftentimes, the area can be a little bit more confusing. And you know, you're like, okay, why are we, you know, why is one lot necessarily paying additional money for some additional footage when in fact they are actually receiving almost the same benefit in many ways? You know, Mr. Ferguson talked about connections, services, and I had mentioned also fire hydrants and those type of things. So oftentimes, unless it's an extreme area or areas in which it doesn't necessarily at first show benefit because it doesn't necessarily front, often, you know, the front footage method is usually the most straightforward and easier to define. And more clear.
So in this case, as a, for instance, I'm creating an example and maybe that's not fair, but I'm trying to just understand your, your point. So if on, for example, this one, if the, the lot to the southeast were to stay as one, one unit and the front, and the house was towards the front of that, they would receive no, no different benefit than some, than, than a lot across the street that has a smaller frontage, but they'd be paying the same.
Exactly.
But in the case that they, they subdivide, we're still talking about the same frontage in terms of lineal feet, but not necessarily the same number of lots or number of units. So it could be split differently on the calculations.
Yeah.
If I could just add one little point, one of the things that we also have in our code is the ability to segregate. So when any one of the property owners that's affected by this would like to segregate because they're going to develop and they don't want to, and they're going to subdivide and they don't want to take on the entire burden, they can pay to go through the segregation process that we can engage in. And then those can be recorded on the new lots. And we have to use the same, one of the rules is we have to use the same method that we use originally. We can't switch horses midstream. But that is an opportunity for folks who subdivide to be able to then not be able to carry that entire burden and it can run with the, the sub-parcels at that point, the infant parcels.
I don't, I don't think I have any further questions at this time, but thank you, Mr. Ford.
Thank you. Go ahead, Councilman Campos.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I think it's important, if we do a motion, that we use language that is flexible, that may be not bound us to exactly what the engineer's presented. And so if, if everyone's agreeable, I think I'm going to take a stab at this. And if you don't like my language, if nobody seconds it, I'm not going to be offended. So I motion for staff to prepare findings and conclusions of facts as presented at tonight's meetings and to present staff or present city council these findings at a later reasonable date.
There's motion?
I don't know that we adequately defined that. We had, essentially, at this point, I think we have two competing, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Roscoe, but I believe we have two competing. Mr. Roscoe, would you like to further define what your position would be or your proposal would be?
Before we get there, I have a handful of questions.
Okay, great. And just, just so we know, a motion is on the floor, but it hasn't been seconded until we're okay.
And after reading the code, it does appear that there was a lateral or branches, and I'm not sure if that was applying to the lateral or branches of where the water main would actually be used. And that's what we were requesting, that the amount to the frontage foot, I guess, of parcel one would be included fully, knowing that the only reason why they brought the water main was in fact to subdivide the property. And if I understand correctly, the reason why they installed the water main was because of requirement of the city in order to subdivide the property. So we would request that the full amount of their parcel one would be included in that frontage foot.
And that's the, when you say full amount of parcel one, do you mean the, the portion that goes south?
Yes, well, it would. Right. So their entire use, both lots versus just the, the small portion of the front.
Okay, great.
So, Mr. Ferguson, turning to your segregation point. Would that segregation cost only affect the single lot? Or would it allow the city to pull back or recalculate funds as segregated? I mean, so let's say this is 20%, I didn't see the percentage. It's 20%. Would we see like a 12%, 8% of the whole, or would the segregation only be, you know, 50/50 from the two lots? How would the segregation fund impact the other owners is what I'd like to know.
Sure. So let's take, for example, a lot four in the, it's the, the large, largest one on the upper left side there. If, let's say, lot four is able to be subdivided into four lots, their current portion of the total is, I believe they're, are they Kaiser or Cantu? I'm not sure which one they are. I think they're.
They're Johnson.
Yeah, I think so, yes. It's the, it's Kaiser, so it's 34.4% of the total. So of that 34.4%, that would get split four ways. And so, but they have to pay to go through that process because then that gets recorded on those new parcels and it runs with those parcels now. So as we go through that process, that's how folks are able to subdivide, but then not take that, all that burden on themselves and pass it on to future owners.
Okay, I think that answers my question. I'm going to restate what you said, just to clarify for myself. The segregation will not impact the burden to the other owners?
No.
Okay, so it's only a benefit to the individual who, or, or group that subdivides?
That's correct, yeah. And any lot owner can petition for segregation.
Okay. Just looking back at the code, as you cited, 14.25.040. Ultimately, what you said is this is recorded and it runs with the property. And if no one hooks in, or, or if a particular owner never hooks in, that, that it's not a lien, whatever recording device we're using here goes away. And there's no payment that would ever occur over the 20 years unless tapped into?
That's correct.
And what's the impact, you know, if, if they were to tap in but not pay it as a recording device? It's not a lien, what does it look like?
Well, that's, that's a great question because the, we're responsible to not allow them to tap. And if there's an illegal tap, then we have the authority to go out and remove it. So one of the things that, that we're kind of the, you know, the, the heavy in this deal because we're the one who's, who gives out the water meter. And if we're giving out water meters without getting these funds, yeah, we, we shouldn't be doing that.
Okay.
Do you have a comment from our city manager?
I need to be sworn in. Okay, so what, what this kind of comes down to, if you, if you look at what methods can be used, I only provide four. And zone termini is absolutely, it would give you a headache to even talk about it on this project. It really kind of, number of units probably is not equitable, given the amount of pipe it takes to serve each of the different lots. So it really comes down to square footage and front footage. And that's, that's really the question council needs to decide tonight. You have the city engineer basically saying, between those two that are left, front footage is the most common and pretty much the most equitable. So that's, that, trying to get it down to its simplest form, that's, that's what we're left with. And that, I think that needs, that's the direction we need from council is, does council want to guide us towards the front footage or the square footage formula? And after that, it's just a math problem. Thank you.
Councilman Ryan?
Thank you. I've got one final question. This may be for Director White. This plot number one, the Garcias, it sounds like they're looking, they've already applied to. Do you have a status on that that could help guide us on what may be more equitable as present or in, in the impending present?
No, I don't, but that can be provided, of course, quite simply.
From my perspective, I think that'd be a beneficial point to, to know as we make our findings or press them down the road. I think it's something that I'd like at least explored. Not saying that we can't make the findings and condition them, but based on that subset of facts, I think that would be critical because that could impact the frontage foot if that is, if that subdivision is dependent on this.
Yeah, as I stated before, the, the council doesn't have to be in a hurry with this. Obviously, you don't want it to languish because it's something that affects rights of, of parties. But at the same time, there's, there's nothing wrong with continuing a hearing to be able to gain more information and come back with additional information. So I'm happy to do that. And if we want to. Yep, I think so.
If that's the case, if council's agreeable, we'd have to pull your motion, then make a motion.
At this point, yeah, just a motion to continue.
Yeah.
Comment from Mayor Protemaloni first and then Councilman Campos. You kept putting your light on.
I was thinking and not thinking, I just, I'll go ahead and let staff or council finish discussion and I'll go.
All right, when, when I'm looking at this, I mean, when, so I'm putting my math hat on, right? So I look at, start doing my, my, you know, middle school geometry here. And when I, when I look at this and how the allocations would change with a square footage versus a lineal footage benefit. So if I understand, like, for example, lot five, square footage wise would maybe, you know, to ballpark it here, probably is going to have a similar proportion as, as lots two and three. Whereas currently, they're, they're, they're the, by far the largest portion that's allocated a benefit. And I don't believe that those owners are here tonight. Is that, is that accurate? For lot, sorry, lot five? So they're the ones that will be most, they will, they will see the largest change, I think, in terms of this. Probably followed by lot, maybe, well, probably lot one, then four. So we would see a shifting around and I'm just not sure that that changes the equitability overall for, for all of the lots. And that's where, I'm, I'm not in a rush to make the decision, but I'm just doing my, my quick and dirty math here. I think it shifts some things, but I, I, I'm not sure I see it as being necessarily immediately more, more equitable than, than the lineal feet. So I guess at this point in time, I'm certainly interested in more information as to understand what that would look like from the benefit. I am interested in understanding what that, what, what, what we know of as future plans. So, so if, if that be the case, I'd be supportive of continuing this to receive more information rather than jump into, you know, riding towards a conclusion tonight. If that's, if that's a reasonable direction for us to go, that's, that's, I guess, what I'd support, you know. I want, I want to get this right. I don't want to get this fast. Thank you.
So I want to revisit, I guess, what the intent of my motion was. I was, again, the language I presented in there is I would like to see staff come back with the information that's presented to us, which includes Mr. Roscoe's information, which includes discussion that staff is, or council is.
which includes discussion that staff or council has had, which includes the engineer's evaluation. I was hoping that my motion would then get that information, a conclusion based on that information back to us, which may include some information. However, if council doesn't feel that that is adequate or appropriate, I'm happy to pull that motion and continue it. But I do think that the intent of what I presented in my motion covers that. So open to more, more discussion, but I'll go from there.
The biggest distinction between the, the motion and then what was previously discussed is that at this point, we would need to draft findings and conclusions and come back with those versus continuing and coming back with information.
That's fair enough.
Just a second. Councilwoman Torres, is there any comment that you'd like to share?
No, no comment at this time.
Thank you. Mayor Portemaloni and Councilwoman Roach.
Just one clarification. Councilmember Serrano, if I'm understanding correctly, you're wanting to take a look at what future development looks like in case it changes the frontage here on this lot number one?
Correct. If that development, that splitting of the lot is conditioned on receiving a benefit from this project, it seems that that should be contemplated as one project. It should be two pieces, albeit the same linear footage or frontage footage. But it does seem that if that's conditioned on that, you're adding another user, why not, you know, have the same type of cost sharing to that?
I'll be candid with council. I'm not sure that we can provide that information or you could base a decision on that. I will have to research that. I know there has been other situations where depending on the use of a particular lot, it did have some effect, but I don't know to what degree. So I would just be careful that, and caution that we might not be able to rely on any potential use. I think you can rely obviously on square footage and front footage because while those have development effects, I don't know that we could say, well, this, this particular lot is currently subdividing, therefore, we're going to go with this method. That might be a little precarious. So I'm not sure yet, but I'll do the research.
Fair enough.
Okay, thank you. More comment from Councilwoman?
I'm just, whatever direction you'd like me to take, Madam Mayor, is where I'd like to proceed.
So you're going to amend?
Withdraw.
Withdraw?
I just wanted to add that I am with Mayor Portemaloni, that we should find out more information in Serrano. I don't feel comfortable at this moment of making a, a motion as far as without getting a little more information. And I'd like to hear what it would pencil out to, just like what we've talked about. So just wanted to make sure you knew my opinion as well. Thank you.
Okay. Well, with that said, then, I would like to rescind my motion, withdraw my motion. But I would like to then make a motion to continue Item A, Appeal for Garcia Lake Comer for Water Main Insulation to a later date.
There's a motion?
If, if we could do that at a specific date, that would be preferred.
The, our next council meeting?
I say right, next regular meeting, which would be?
Next regular meeting.
Yeah.
Which would be, would, do you require a date?
Which would be March 28, 2022. It's workshop meeting. April 4th. Thank you, Mr. Serrano.
Okay, there's a.
I'll second the motion to continue.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Councilwoman Torres? I would hope she is an aye as well. And it passes, it passes unanimously. So, I was going to say, Councilman. Mr. Ferguson, is that enough direction to move forward?
Absolutely.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. And with that, we move on to Item Nine, ordinances and resolutions not relating to hearings. And Item Nine A, ordinance to the Oberding and Farm 2005 LLC. And Director White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. This item concerns the annexation that was passed by council in January. It was just under 600 acres on the north side of Burns Road centered on Road 60. Unfortunately, the ordinance that was passed in January contained an error in the legal description. So this proposed ordinance before you tonight corrects that error. And then the next item on the agenda, of course, also refers to the Oberding annexation.
Can I get a motion, please?
Yes, Mayor Barajas. I move to approve ordinance number 4574A, which repeals an amended ordinance number 4574, annexing certain real property to the city of Pasco and further authorize publication by summary only.
Have a motion? Can I get a second?
I'll second that.
I'll second.
Just kidding.
Moved by Mayor Portemaloni, seconded by Councilwoman Torres. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes unanimously. And with that, we move on to Item Nine B, ordinance Oberding and Farm 2005 LLC. Again, Director White?
Thank you again, Madam Mayor and Council. This item implements zoning for the Oberding annexation area. The Pasco Hearing Examiner conducted public meetings in both December and in February on this item and has recommended the council approval of those zoning designations contained in the proposed ordinance. Chief among them, that the zoning determination as recommended by the examiner isn't compliant with our comprehensive plan and will benefit the community as a whole. So no appeal of those, this recommendation has been received.
And Madam Mayor, just real quick, we obviously have another quasi judicial matter and just would recite the same five criteria, demonstrated bias against or for any of the parties, any direct or indirect financial interest, whether there's been a prejudgment of the issues, whether there's been any ex parte contact with any of them, with anyone other than staff prior to this hearing. And finally, any conflict that council member believes would prevent them from hearing the matter. So any disclosures would be, need to be made at this time.
Does anyone have any disclosures to make?
This is Councilmember Torres. I do just want to re-disclose again that I have property adjacent to the Oberding Farms and I will need to recuse myself from this vote.
Great.
Thank you.
Any members of the public wish to disqualify anybody? Hearing none.
Thank you for that. So do we have any questions or comments from our council regarding this topic? Hearing none. Can I get a motion?
Yes. Mayor Barajas, I would move that to adopt, sorry, this, yeah, there. I'll move to adopt ordinance number 4584, assigning zoning to the Oberding and Farm 2005 annexation areas recommended by the hearing examiner and further authorize publication by summary only.
Can I get a second?
I'll second this one.
So it's moved by Mayor Portemaloni and seconded by Councilman Serrano. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have six ayes and one recuse. And with that, we will move on to Item Nine C. Another quasi judicial matter, ordinance affinity and hydro at Broadmoor Apartments Plant Unit Development, Development Rezone. Director White?
Thank you again, Madam Mayor. This item involves a rezone from the current residential transition zone to the R4 slash public preliminary plant unit development zoning district for a multifamily housing project located on the south side of Burns, almost exactly a half mile west of Broadmoor Boulevard. The applicants intend to incorporate open space and a variety of housing styles and trail systems into this development. At the, and this will be reviewed at the project level, much as a preliminary plat is. And the hearing examiner conducted hearings on this in January and has forwarded a recommendation for council's approval of this rezone request.
And one more time, any council members have any of the concerns with the disclosures previously mentioned? Hearing none? Are any members of the public seeking to disqualify a member of council from participating in the proceedings? None?
Perfect, thank you. Any questions or comments from our council? Council, Councilman Serrano?
Thank you. Just a couple of questions and comments, Director White. You know, one of the things that caught my attention is Chief Gier unfortunately isn't here and he's talked about adding some of these more senior residents and how dramatically that impacts our fire service calls. We were already very concerned about adding one about twice the size. I think it was close to 400 units and we've got now this at 170. And one of the things that City Manager Zabels mentioned is the potential need to look at impact fees. We're not there yet, but I guess what I'm getting a very long-winded way of saying is I'm concerned about the direct impact to the fire and EMS services from this project. Couple of other things that I am a bit concerned about is Section 2.2.1 addresses some road widening at certain places. It's unclear to me as to whether that would be a burden laid on the developer or something shared.
The answer to your latter question, Councilman Serrano, is it would be on the developer, the road improvements. And I do recall Chief Gier's comments, I think it was just two weeks ago, the, he actually took the total number of units that were planned for this development and applied those to senior housing. Not that that alleviates the concern, but the senior housing unit count for this particular project is estimated at 170.
Okay, I did, I thought he was talking about entirely separate project plus this one, so it was going to be a compounding concern. So, okay, that's, that's comforting to know. And then the one other question I have, it's in Section 5.3.3. It's digital page 15 in our packet. I see there are 710 planned parking spaces, but the traffic count is indicating 126 in the morning and 157 in the PM. That's almost a quarter of the planned parking spaces as a high level of, can you speak to that?
Those are peak hour trips. So it's not total trips.
Right, no, I, I get that. But I mean, if, if you have 700 spaces plus 410 living, you know, units, it's hard to press for me to believe that those individuals won't all be commuting or a significant portion of that. You know, we're talking about less than a quarter at 126 over 410, all leaving for work. If they work at Hanford, there's about an hour and a half span. If they work elsewhere, it's usually eight or nine. So I guess my concern is we're talking about a lot more parking and a lot more living spaces than the total peak trips. It just seems a bit off to me and a little bit low for an area where we're already, already very concerned about traffic congestion. So I'm, look, I'm not a traffic engineer or analyst. I'm just very concerned that we have a lot more parking and a lot more living than the peak trips. And again, that's calculated on 60-minute, an hour interval, right? Give or take. So my, that's just my concern is I, to me, it seems like it's grossly underestimated. Rarely do I ever look at this level of detail, not look at it, but key in on this level of detail. But it just seems, again, with 710 parking stalls, 410 units, that only 126 peak hour trips, knowing that we're kind of a clockwork community, it just seems a little insufficient to me. And again, we're already talking about, what, a $40 million interchange potentially in that area to get on the highway? So again, just expressing concerns that I know this is going to be a tremendous impact and I hope we're not underestimating it.
Any further comment from our council members? Mayor Portemaloni?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor Barajas. Director White, so notifications were sent within 300, with property owners within 300 feet of this. Is that, is that accurate on process? So do we have a list of who that went to? Given the location, I, I don't know that there's a whole lot of property owners there. There's maybe two, three? Is this listed in our packet?
I think there's a handful, Councilman Maloney. I don't recall if the affidavit, affidavit mailing is attached in your agenda report or not. Normally, they are.
I didn't see it, but I've been misled on that one before, so I'm, you know, deferring to your, information there.
I don't see the affidavit mailing here. My recollection is that it was approximately six property owners.
All right, that's, that's less for this particular matter in front of us, but more as an example, I guess, when I'm looking at something that has have, you know, significant regional impact and who's being invited to the table to discuss it. So that was the only question I had. Thank you.
Councilman Serrano?
Thank you, Mayor. And to piggyback on Mayor Portem's question, if the individuals, let's say someone directly north across Burns Road that lives in the county, there was actually a residential subdivision directly north that was 300 feet, would we be required by our code to actually provide notice to those county residents or is it only 300 feet within city limits?
No, it's a simple assessor exercise. You just draw a GIS circle around the parcel and pull your owner list.
Okay, I appreciate that because I was concerned that, you know, again, obviously no one lives across Burns Road, but literally across Burns Road, if it was cut off by county, then we could potentially be missing out on individuals. So I appreciate that.
Any further comment from any of our council members? Seeing none. Lost my place on my agenda.
I'll have to make a motion if you ask me to.
Can we, can you, is there a motion?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Barajas. I move to adopt ordinance number 4585, rezoning, rezoning Lot Three of the Broadmoor parcel segregation from RT to R4 slash PUD and further authorize publication by summary only.
There's a motion by Mayor Portemaloni. Can I get a second?
I'll second that.
Councilman? Moved by Mayor Portemaloni and seconded by Councilwoman Torres. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say nay?
Nay.
Nay.
We have four ayes, three ayes, five ayes. Five ayes and two, two nays. Thank you for that. And so we move on to Item, Item 10, any unfinished business? None listed. And move on to Item 11. Item 11A, 2021 Community Survey Highlights. And Ms. Pashon?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. All right, so the National Community Survey is developed to provide communities an accurate and affordable and easy way to assess and interpret resident opinion and insights. So really kind of that community scorecard. It standardizes common questions, so we have trends over time and it assures our results are valid. For Pasco, we've been doing this survey in odd years since 2015. And with that, we provide that in early, even years so that it can be included in the discussions for developing your council goals. We opt to have custom policy questions and we also offer an open participation. So there's two different surveys that go out, same questions. The first survey is going to be that statistically valid survey, the ones where we get the trends over time. The open participation is one that is done online and its results are kept separate. So anyone in our community can actually opt in to provide that feedback to us. Generally, we see that the open participation is in line with the statistically valid results that come from that. We also have the option for Spanish participation in the, both, both those surveys. So with the survey, there are 10 facets of the community. They're listed here, I won't go through all of them. In the survey timeline, policy discussion, or policy questions were discussed in the fall of 2021. The policy area or the questions that were selected were to look at short-term rental program, mental health. were to look at short-term rental program, mental health sales tax, and regulation changes to allow retail marijuana. With the random or statistically valid survey, 37, 3,700 households were selected. There was a hybrid option this year, so a portion of them received only the paper application or the paper survey. Everyone was able to do it online if they chose to, and then the others received just an invite to complete it online. Anyone who wanted to complete the Spanish option was completing it online. We collected data from November, mid-November to mid-January, and then we opened that open participation online survey as well, and we received the results in February of 2022. Okay, and on this slide, it gives the last three cycles that we've had. So, a number of households and how they completed, total responses, rates, and our error factor. We always want to stay at least 5%. So, we did a great job this year as well. For the results, for this survey, anything that was seen with a 9% change was considered statistically significant. So, when you look through the survey, you'll see some changes up and down, but that 9% number is kind of what we're looking at this year. Overall ratings in those facets remain very stable. That is either on page seven of the NRC report or the, let's see here, if you're looking at the online version, it would be the facets of the livability tab. We did see parks and recreation opportunities decrease this cycle, but a lot of that would be due to COVID restrictions, not being able to have that, the opportunities that we generally have in a recreation program. And I would also note that our benchmark data is included in your agenda packet, but our benchmark communities primarily did this prior to COVID. So, we're kind of on the front end of doing this after the pandemic. So, as I said, generally, we remain stable or steady in our, our overall facets. With this, you'll see that we did remain steady and kind of you'll see that we have the 2019 statistically valid, the 2021 statistically valid, and then the open participation. I will note that Pasco as a place to work increased by 11% this cycle, which speaks to all of the, the jobs and ability to bring people back to work. This is, this slide talks through more of the, the city services, so you'll, I'll talk a little bit about police and safety a little bit later, but we did, again, remain pretty stable. We did see a 10% increase in our utility billing. I do think that's partially due to, you know, the services that they were providing and all the support that they provided over the last couple of years. This slide highlights some of the areas where COVID, we saw some impacts. Value of services for taxes paid. Our facilities were closed for quite a while, so we saw a decrease there. Variety of businesses and service establishments, obviously, again, the pandemic and not being able to access as many or having establishments close. Vibrancy of downtown, we had Peanuts Park under construction as well as restrictions. And this item, community value and respecting residents of diverse backgrounds. And I'll note, this is the community as a whole, not the city itself, or the city of Pasco itself, but with the national dialogue going with DEI, it was, we definitely saw some adjustments here, but we are remaining similar with the benchmark communities survey or the data. And then opportunities to participate in social events and activities. I think we all know that that was a little bit of a challenge this go-around. Mobility, we remain pretty steady in our overall quality of transportation, and I just wanted to highlight the completion or the near completion of the city's first transportation system master plan. So, this has been a priority and continues to be a One of the areas of focus from this survey came out as the community design, and I could go through the endless efforts that are going on with, with availability of affordable housing, but I've listed them here and several of the actions that you've recently taken. Now, public safety remains an area of continued importance, and that's seen with the police strategic master plan, the new Fire Station 83, Fire Station 84, and the Fire Admin Building. But we did see a decrease after steady levels of satisfactory levels over the last several cycles, and that can be attributed to several of the actions regarding legislative actions on police response, the Supreme Court Blake decision, national dialogue on police reform, and COVID-19 itself. So, the, the policy questions, one of the policy questions was to gauge support or opposition to add staffing to manage a short-term rental program. So, I've listed that here. Mental health sales tax. Luckily, this was already done by the counties. And then regulation changes to allow retail marijuana. And so, the reports are available, and I'll work with Communication Programs Manager John Fember to get these up on our website. This year, we do have not only the PDF available in your council packet, but they have an online dashboard where you can kind of sort through and data mine a little bit more. I will note that you, there is the ability to look at council districts, so you can see how many individuals responded in your districts, but just weigh those accordingly because of the smaller numbers. We try to keep them all together to have the statistically valid piece of it.
Thank you for that, Angela. Do we have any questions or comments from anyone in our council? Go ahead, Mayor Potemaloni.
Thank you, Ms. Pishon, for the, for the report. Really appreciate it. So, in regards to the safety element, you know, the indication that people feel less safe, and certainly we know that the state has, has been taking a lot of action over the last few years. Have we cross-checked that with the actual data we're seeing, especially locale-based? Are we seeing an increase in crime that may be, that this may be feelings because of that match a reality? Have we done that work yet, or no?
Say that one more time for me.
Sure. So, we're seeing that the, that, you know, there's this feeling that people are feeling less safe in our community. Have we cross-checked that with actual safety statistics, you know, seeing if there's an increase in certain types of crime, or specifically down to regions of potential crime and where people respondents may feel that? Maybe the reality matches the impression as well, and I'm hoping to understand that a little better.
Sure. Last, last year, we had a slight increase in part one crimes and a decrease in part two crimes, and we are tracking those monthly now. Obviously, every month, we track those that come out, and we do have an uptick in crime, similar to what the rest of the state is seeing. So, it's not surprising that we're seeing it. There's a lot of reasons for it, but yeah, we are continuing to monitor that, look at it, and put the resources where we think it's best to address those. We've talked about legislation that's hampered us, the Blake decision, et cetera. So, those are all key factors that come into play. But yes, we continue to monitor and track, track the data.
If I could just add to that, so the legislation came into effect on July 1 of last year, and so I think you kind of saw crime, as the chief responded, was referring to ramp up a little bit from that. But I, you know, I, Ms. Pishon put in COVID-19 as a factor too, and in that case, it's not so much the disease. It's, there was a lot of people home, and there was a lot of stuff happening all across the country, you know, that we could all see on our TV sets. And so, it just kind of gave, I think it gave everyone a bit of a sense of, I'm not as safe feeling as I was the year before, before, you know, all these protests, protests that some, some included riots afterward or during. And there was just a lot of stuff going on last year to put people, make them, make them uneasy, you know, along with some of the things that our legislature did. And I, you know, for those listening tonight, the legislature made some corrections this session, still evaluating what those are, and we'll put those in effect, and those will help. So, in terms of giving some tools back to law enforcement.
So, I'll try to summarize all that up, because there was a lot of information. In essence, we're seeing somewhat of an uptick, but maybe not to the level that perhaps the community is, is thinking there may be an uptick in, in our crime rate across the city. And it's not uniform, all crime up, it's types of crime.
Yeah, I guess I could pull the exact numbers of which is going up. Yeah, we're seeing many of the areas of the data that increase. We still rank very safe as a community. The perception is largely out there, and when, when law enforcement isn't engaging in, in some crime fighting efforts, certainly the public might feel that. As Mr. Zabel had mentioned, the legislature made some corrections this year, and we're excited to get with Mr. Ferguson, analyze those, and see how we're going to quickly get, get those safety measures back into the community for our officers.
Okay, I appreciate all that. I just want, I want to make sure that people understand the large context. It's easy to look at these numbers and see a statistically significant feeling of a decrease in safety, and there may be some reality to it, but not probably to the extent that people are feeling it. And I just want to make sure that we have the numbers to back that up. I'm not looking for those numbers right now. I know that will be reported in due time, so I'm not asking you to do any additional work, Chief, but just wanted to thank you for helping add that context. Last thing I was going to say is the fact that the county measures may appreciate, specifically seeing that the super majority of the respondents in Pasco are supportive of the action they took, even if they made the choice to take that, that bold action by themselves, they may provide them some, some relief to know that city of Pasco residents are clearly behind the decision they made. So, thank you. All right, one more thing. We will be talking about some of these items on or at a retreat. Is that correct?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, this is, this is the resource material for the retreat, and you'll, you'll have all of it available in, you know, looking through it later this evening before the meeting. You can dig pretty deep by district. So, it's, it's exciting to have this level of information available. I don't, I don't know that we're going to necessarily go through another, a deeper dive into this at the retreat, because we have a lot to cover, but I think it'll be helpful to, I mean, it's helpful to have this kind of resource available to us. We can kind of sense, at least from a statistically valid sense, the pulse of the community. There's, there's other information, certainly the listening sessions and, and some of the other things that have been going on as well.
Great. I just want to make sure that people in the listening audience don't think that this is the last time we're going to talk about a couple of these topics. We are, we as council are going to look at this. So, just want to make sure that was clear for some people that I know are watching and paying attention right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Councilman Serrano.
Thank you. Just one quick request. Can you make sure that that link comes out with our retreat packet or before the retreat? I know for me, for some reason, I was unable to download that agenda item, but pulled it offline, and it was a PDF. And long story short, the link would be helpful.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments from our council members? Councilwoman Torres, do you have any comments?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. And so, we move on to item 12. Any miscellaneous discussion? City manager?
I had just a couple items. One, on behalf of the staff, I wanted to extend our appreciation to the city council for supporting the employee awards banquet. Let's say, I think that's a meaningful celebration by the employees on longevity, safe driving, employees of the year awards, and something we weren't able to do last year, obviously, because of COVID. And I think folks really enjoyed the opportunity to be together, and, you know, of course, it's the first kind of that opportunity most, most of us have been able to engage in since the mask mandate portion came off. So, that, that was a, it was a pretty decent evening, and I think folks really appreciated council supporting that event, and, and as well as your attendance. So, I did want to mention a couple of other things. So, we have a payment kiosk now in front of City Hall for utility payments. This would also include basin disposal and the PUD payments, and it's one of three kiosks we have across the city. This one, you know, we were looking at potentially a drive-up, and we wound up with just a front steps of City Hall thing, but it's going to allow our customers 24-hour-a-day access to pay their bills and don't have to, don't have to rush to get here at 5:00 on a Friday night. They're going to be able to do it Saturday morning at their convenience. The other two, the other, the other two locations are Hapo Center and then Franklin County PUD. We also have a roundtable conversion, excuse me, roundtable conversation on Ag and the Lower Snake River that's going to be hosted by Dan Newhouse tomorrow afternoon at the Richland Federal Building Auditorium from 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM. So, it's a mid-morning meeting. Unfortunately, most of us probably won't be able to make that, but I did want to get that announcement out there. I think, you know, the Snake River, Lower Snake River Dam issue is something that's pretty important to this community and certainly something the council's paying attention to. And then also tomorrow evening from 6:00 to 8:00 PM at Salon Monte Carlo at 411 Lewis Street, a Lewis Street Workshop discussion. So, Public Works is hosting that there to get more input from the community. So, just those four items tonight. Thank you.
Thank you for that, city council. Sorry, city manager. Do we have any other miscellaneous communications from our council members? And we do have a need for executive session. Do we know for how long?
It should be approximately 15 minutes.
So, with that, city council will now meet in executive session to discuss...
Real estate.
To discuss real estate issues, the city council will be in executive session until
Can we, can we clarify one thing? I know it's, it's annoying, but we need to clarify that we're going to go into executive session for the purchase of real estate.
The purchase of real estate.
Not the sale.
Okay, city council will now meet in executive, executive session to discuss purchase of real estate. We will be meeting for 15 minutes. We will be joined by our city attorney and city manager.
And deputy.
And deputy city attorney. City manager. Thank you. Okay, and the council meeting has reconvened at 8:42:07, and with no further business, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone that has been watching, and have a great evening.